It's not what existed.
I think we'll get started. We're a little late. I apologize for that. We had quite a bit to talk about in our last closed session. So, I would like to call our September 21st regular board meeting to order. Do we have certification by the board?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Hall-Lenard. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion certifying the closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. I am Asia Smith. I'm in the fourth grade. My teacher is Ms. Bobco and Ms. Christopher. When I finish college, I want to go to... When I finish college, I want to become a pediatrician. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, and the visible, liberatory, and justice for all. Thank you.
We have a roll call. Ms. Moore?
Amy Phillips. Michelle Williams.
Present.
Brian Boosman.
Present.
Robert Holt.
Present.
Dr. Hall-Lenard.
Present.
Rebecca Jester.
Present.
Jessica Green.
Present.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda to strike the review of policy GCQA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Is there a reason to remove it?
Yes, I'd like to keep the policy. It is a will... To keep the policy as is and not to revise.
Which policy?
Policy GCQA.
Any further discussion? I have a question. Is there any reason not to have that policy?
I just provided my rationale for the motion.
Okay. The policy is non-school employment by staff members reporting their outside work. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Could we show of hands? All those in favor, raise your hand.
Of the... All in favor of the motion?
To drop the policy from the agenda.
That was the motion. Yes.
All opposed to that motion, raise your hand.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
This is a policy that has existed for some time. It's just a... So, all we're doing is tabling the rewrite? Or you're taking that whole policy?
My motion is... My motion was that we strike policy GCQA from the agenda and leave the policy as is. If you recall, Ms. Jester... Okay, the policy was given to us, board members. The changes are underlined. And so, my motion is that we would leave this policy as is, meaning we would strike it from the agenda to make a revision and leave the policy as is. That was the only change.
Okay. For clarification, the motion is to strike it entirely from the agenda. If you're in favor of that, raise your hand. We have two. If you're opposed to that, raise your hand. We have four. We'll leave it on the agenda.
Initially, we had three. So, somebody changed their mind?
Evidently.
I want to ask Mr. Williams, was that appropriate to have that, to vote twice? I have to ask for counsel.
As I listen to the discussion, striking it from the agenda does not impact the policy one way or the other. It means that the policy could be brought back at a later date.
That is correct.
Alright, so getting that out of the way, my understanding. As I understand, the two votes are either four-two to leave it on, or it's three-three tie.
Right.
Which means it stays on.
Mm-hmm.
So, in either event, it stays on the agenda because there wasn't enough support to strike it from the agenda.
But we do want the minutes to reflect it correctly. So, was it three-three, or was it four-three? Because it looks to me like we did it twice.
Well, I'm sorry. I was not counting the votes the first time.
I did.
Okay.
So, we want the minutes to reflect.
Well, and I can't help you there because I didn't count the people who voted.
The first time was three-three.
The first time was three-three. Because we do want the minutes to reflect it correctly. Thank you.
Well, then, because you have this controversy, I would suggest to have the minutes reflected correctly, you get a voice vote for the people that voted on the three-three tie, so that they should identify themselves as to how they voted by voice, either for or against the motion to strike. Otherwise... Because I don't think Ms. Moore... I mean, Ms. Moore didn't... Ms. Moore, you did not understand who voted on the three-three. You don't have them identified, do you?
I don't have it written down, but I can identify.
You can identify.
And I can too. And I'm sure the audience can.
Well, but...
There was only one person that did not vote that first time, and that was Ms. Jester.
Yeah, the first time I counted, three to two.
Right.
And I knew there were six of us, so I wanted to find out what the...
It's okay. I just want the clarification that the minutes reflect.
Alright, well, so now you got a problem that you got some people saying it was three-two instead of three-three.
No, I'm saying it was... I'm saying it was...
I suggest you do a voice vote on how it was the first time that it was voted on, so that it's clear in the minutes. Otherwise, I'm not going to know, and I was here.
How about a hand vote?
He said a voice vote. We did the hand vote.
You did a hand vote the first time, and I don't know who voted what.
I made the motion.
Alright, well, okay. So, I've given you my opinion. If you don't want to follow my opinion, y'all can go on with the meeting. I don't run your meeting.
Alright, let's have a... We have a third vote. Should we do that?
No, I'm okay with... I made the motion. I'm okay with it staying on the agenda because... But my point is, we voted twice. So, if the minutes are going to reflect it correctly, whoever voted the first time that says yea, they should identify themselves with a voice vote. Then whoever voted the second time, if you change your mind, it's okay that you change your mind, but let's identify ourselves, so that it's correctly reflected in the minutes.
Oh, I changed my mind.
Right. Okay, so who else voted yes? I said yes the first time. Okay. Thank you.
Are we okay?
I'm good.
Okay. Moving on. Do we have anyone signed up for citizens' time?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No one for citizens' time?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, and I don't want to prolong it. We already started late. But we still have not approved the agenda. Am I correct, Mr. Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
No, second.
We have an emotion to approve the agenda and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. We have no citizens' time. I consent agenda action to approve minutes. We have minutes of our August 17th meeting and our September 7th meeting. We have a motion to approve our August 17th, 2017 minutes.
I make a motion we approve the August 17th, 2017 school board meeting minutes.
Second?
No, second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve September 7th school board meetings? Minutes?
I make a motion we approve the call school board meeting minutes of all... I mean, September the 7th, 2017.
We have a second.
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Reported the superintendent, Ms. Sterling.
Thank you, Chairman Holt. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I would like to acknowledge our student liaison, Mr. Pope, who is joining us for his very first meeting. We are excited to have you here today, and as far as the superintendent's report is concerned, we're going to start with you. So, if you can provide us with your report, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Sterling. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Najee Pope, and I am currently a senior at Franklin High School. Tonight, I will be speaking on the behalf of the student body from all three schools. At FHS, we started school on September 5th, 2017, along with Joseph P. King and S.P. Morton. We currently have 288 students enrolled, and during our first week, we had pre-testing done, along with Mr. Fel's class meetings were at every grade level. That following Monday, after the first week, we had senior portraits for those who missed their appointment in the summer. Also, we recently began our school tutoring program, which occurs every Monday through Thursday from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. Recently, we have begun our club meetings such as Prom Committee, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Spanish Club, and Opportunity, Inc. We had our first pep rally on September 8th, in which our band, auxiliary, and cheerleaders perform. All fall sports were recognized at our pep rallies, such as football, volleyball, and cheerleaders. Not to mention our football team won their first game that Friday... That Friday evening against Charleston City, which places us at 1-2. And our volleyball team is doing a stellar job of competing with a record of 7-3. Our JROTC program also did a great job presenting our colors at the pep rally. Here at FHS, our biggest focus is to improve our math SOELE scores. Therefore, we've been having math competitions every Friday. This allows our math classes and students to compete for the highest score possible and to be rewarded with pizza and punch that Friday evening. We are currently preparing for Benchmark 1 on October 3rd and 4th, and will incorporate those same incentives. The teachers, administrators, and students are proud that FHS is fully accredited for the 2017-18 school year. And to conclude the FHS topic, the students and staff complete our Student Government Association elections for the 2017-18 school year. In fact, I am humbled to say that I'm the SGA's president, who will soon vote for our homecoming court, which is quickly approaching. Our homecoming game is October 20th, and our dance is October 21st. At S.P. Morton, they had a Back to School Committee, Community Fund Day, and Open House Registration in August, and a Family Reading Night and PTA Meeting in September. JP King is ecstatic for the school year, and they are also fully accredited. Their students are back and are ready to learn. In support of that, JPK has the biggest open house in August, which resulted in staff happily meeting the parents. The last two weeks, the students at JPK have been working hard, diving right into their subjects. They had parents as partners Thursday night, and it resulted in a great turnout. Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see, there's a lot going on at our schools, and we commend the work that our principals, our students, our faculty and staff are doing. Next, we'll have Ms. Wade. She'll be presenting good news and our new Bronco Pride Clean School Award. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Holt, Vice Chair, Dr. Hall-Lenard, board members, Ms. Sterling, and Franklin community. It is my pleasure tonight to give our Bronco Pride Clean School Award to the school who showed through an inspection, the cleanest school, had the highest rating for cleanliness, and just sparkle and shine at our school opening on September 5th. That school is S.P. Morton Elementary School. Ms. Clark, our head custodian could not be here with us tonight, but we have with us Mr. Jimmy Reed, Mr. Octavius Kendrick, Ms. Lakeisha Langley, and Ms. Beverly Lawrence.
Yes, please. Okay, I'll move right on into update on personnel. We have currently 110 teachers and professional staff, and by that I mean that those employees who are paid on our teacher's salary schedule. There are 35 at Franklin High School, 24 at JP King, and 51 at S.P. Morton. Our licensed staff, we opened school with 96.3% of all of our instructional staff were licensed and appropriately assigned in their endorsement area. That means we had four vacancies, four vacancies that were filled by substitute teachers. That's how I came up with the percentage. Our MOU calls requires us to have 95% of our instructional staff licensed and endorsed in their assignment area. 19 of our classroom teachers are provisionally licensed, and by that, that means that a teacher still has some coursework or some testing requirements to meet in order to be issued a full professional license. And they are given a provisional license, and they're given three years to meet those requirements. Our probationary staff, we have 70 staff members who are in the probationary status, and that means that our probationary status means those employees, teachers primarily, who have not achieved continuing contract status or what we better known as tenure. And a teacher must work five years in our division before they're able to reach continuing contract status or tenure. If they have worked in another school division in Virginia and achieved continuing contract status, then they only have to work two years with us. So, we keep track of all of our probationary and continuing contract teachers. Currently, our vacancies are, we have one 4th grade math-science teacher, one alternative education teacher, one 4th grade reading social studies teacher, one middle school art teacher, our coordinator of exceptional education, and data manager. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Before we move forward, we'd like to recognize our school, our middle school, JP King today. If I can have the faculty and staff please stand at this time. JPK faculty and staff worked diligently over the past couple of years to achieve something that we are so proud of them for. This year, they are recognized as an accredited school in the state of Virginia. We are so proud of their accomplishments, and we just want to say thank you, keep up the good work, and we are here to support you in every and anything you decide to do to continue to move our wonderful students forward to the next level of success. Again, thank you and congratulations. Next, we'll move forward. Thank you. Our next order of business, we're going to have Ms. Wade come back, because we want to talk about the emergency response plan for 2017-18 school year. As you know, the nation has been battling with catastrophic hurricanes and disasters all over, so it is extremely important that we have our plan approved every year, so we can begin to not begin, but continue to educate our entire division on what to do in case of... In case any of these events hit Franklin City Public Schools or the city. Ms. Wade?
You have before you in your board packet the 2017-2018 Emergency Response Plan. This is basically the same response plan that we've had in place for the past three years. There were updates made in the staff members, primarily like the administrators at some of the schools, or each team updated their crisis team members. It's important that each school has a crisis team identified, who the first responders are, and for each of those team members to know what their roles are in case of an emergency. You'll see in the table of contents, which is, I believe, page 6, that this emergency response plan, if you've had a chance to look through it, you'll see that it covers any and all types of emergencies that could arise, whether it be weather-related, whether it be a student emergency, whether it be an outside, a bomb threat, a fire, you know, all emergencies, because we have to be sure that we have plans in place to provide for the safety of all of our children. That is our primary responsibility, is safety of all children and staff, and so we have to have these plans in place. We go through fire drills, tornado drills, lockdown drills regularly, and stay in compliance with all of those, and keep record of all of those. We have people from our Central Services Office to go out when they have these drills at the schools and monitor them and keep track, and we also have our fire department, our emergency management people, our police department to take part in those as well. So, we're very proud of the plans that we have in place, as well as the community partners that come out and help us each time we have these drills. So, this is presented to you tonight for your approval. This is presented to the board each year. By the end of September, school safety survey has to be submitted by each of the principals and by the division to the Department of Safety and Department of Publican... Excuse me, Department of Education, and so we ask for your approval tonight.
Alright, thank you so much. Next, we'll have Mr. Whiting. We will, but when the board has a motion, we decided to put everything at the end, so you can vote on everything at one time. So, each one will come before you, so the response plan will be in the last tab, and it will go over everything in yellow that needs to have a motion. But if this... The boards will. If they would like to vote on it now, that's fine. Okay? May I please proceed? Alright, thank you. Mr. Whiting will update us on our operations update, our greenhouse update, as well as transportation. Mr. Whiting?
Good evening. The... For the greenhouse, we are... We submitted the grant to Southampton Charities, and the grant is included in your packet, and I'm awaiting word to find out if we got the grant from the HVAC. So, as soon as the HVAC comes in, we'll be really moving forward on that. I also talked to the science teachers, Mr. Daughtry... I mean, excuse... Ms. Daughtry and Mr. Leslie at the high school, and they are taking their classes in there currently, and we're starting to begin in the initial cleanup in the greenhouse. Our goal right now is to plant some winter greens. The farmer told us that we can plant those right now without the HVAC, and we should be able to produce some crops in late December. So, we're going to... Our goal for that is to plant something, plant them on the 15th of October. We also, we needed a little bit of help from Maintenance Department. We just recently requested that they come in and spray the weeds inside. We need to take those down, and we are pulling those by hand, but it makes more sense to kill them with the... With some type of weed, and so we may have to... I was going to say, in conversations with them, we may have to contract that out. I don't know yet, but we'll see what happens with that. And then the next, we got a Monsanto grant that's coming up, and that'll be due in December, and we'll be applying for that also, and that'll be more for supplies and things of that nature. Alright? Any questions on the greenhouse? Alright. Also, in your board book, you should have a transportation update. These are the... We've had some maintenance issues with the buses. The stampede was out, and the dates of service that was out and back in are listed on your sheet. We had a steering box and a stampede, but that came back shortly before school started. Bus 11 has a transmission, and it is still out of service at this time. Bus 23 had a window broken in it, and that was out of service for about a week. Bus 24 had a regeneration issue with it, and that's something that buses do on a regular basis, but they shouldn't do it. but they shouldn't do it while you're driving the bus, and it causes you to have to stop the bus in the middle of the run. And bus nine has a control panel issue, and that's still out for service. And bus six, we had some, the lights, the red lights on it stopped working in the middle of the run, so we had to change buses, and that went into shop, and that came back on the fourteenth. Questions about transportation?
How much is a new bus?
Around ninety thousand dollars.
So, are you already a third of the way through your budget? You've spent that much?
Yes, sir. As of the fifth of, first day of school, we were thirty-four percent spent in transportation. But that's, that's only fuel, maintenance, and repair parts.
Is that typical or are you typical?
Say again?
Is that typical?
No, not at all. Any other questions on transportation?
Do you have any good news?
Yes, I do, actually, we, no, we have some very good bus drivers in.
Come on, Mr. Whiting, you can come up with something.
They are very, I'm telling you, they're, they're, no, we do have some outstanding bus drivers. And what happens is, like in all of those cases, those buses broke down in the middle of a run. And so in every single, you know, in every single case, you know, that means we gotta get, you know, we still gotta get kids to school. We have to, you know, either get another bus out there, we have to trans, you know, transfer them from one bus to another, and the bus drivers will, you know, they get it done. And so, I mean, and that's a great thing. We get the kids to school, that's our job.
Mr. Hope, I'm very glad you brought that up because when buses start breaking down, that affects instructional time and getting students to school. And even though a bus is ninety thousand dollars, I know we brought before the board recently a report on how old our buses are. So they, it is time for us to revisit this, and we would, we will bring a plan before the board to try to replenish some of these buses that really need to be exited out of our fleet.
One remaining question. Is the spend rate comparable to the prior year, or is it a budget that shrunk?
The budget shrank.
So, we're sort of comparable spending-wise where we were at this time last year?
We probably slightly above it. We had two transmissions go out this year, this fiscal year. And so, we're probably slightly above it, but because the budget was cut significantly. That's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whiting. Part B of operations update, we'll have Ms. Kindred and Mr. Custer. They will provide us with the utilities update.
Good evening, everyone. In your board packet, you'll find the utility update. And most of this information you have already from previous meetings. However, you will find where I have included in your packet information pertaining to the utility cycles for the previous year so that you could have a comparative as to where we are currently. And if I could direct you to page five and six of the report. The only information that you don't have on page five for J.P. King is the bill from June through July, which was twenty-one thousand. And then the bill that we recently received for July-August, that was also twenty-one thousand. If you would go to page six, with last year's data, you'll see that the average spent for the utility for the period of January through September was four thousand one hundred dollars. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Ms. Kindred. We're following.
Excuse me, we're trying to follow along, excuse me, Ms. Sterling.
I was gonna ask, I was gonna tell her that.
Oh, well, thank you, because I'm like, we don't see a page six, I'm sorry.
That would be.
Right, our, excuse me, our board packet has two slides per page. So we don't have individual of the pages. Please, you'll have to show us. Should put on the screen, thank you.
I'll put it on the screen for you. So, as I stated, the only one that you don't have on the screen would be the bills for June through July, which is twenty-one thousand. And then the July-through-August bill, which was also twenty-one thousand. And if I go to page six, just to show you a comparison of last year's bills, the average was four thousand one hundred dollars for the same cycle that we currently took a look at in this year. Do you all have any questions as far as that information goes?
So you're continuing to work?
Continuing to work with the city in reference to the utilities?
Yes, ma'am. Earlier this week, we had a meeting with the treasurer and the city manager. And they have been in contact, as well as Mr. Custer, with the Department of Power and Lights so that we can look at rectifying this situation. But yes, ma'am, we are.
Thank you.
I can give you a little bit of an update of what's been going on. I became aware of this in February. We had started to rise a little bit, then it came to twenty-one thousand. In March, I contacted the city. We did a walk through our electrical rooms over there. We used an infrared scanner to check all the breakers to make sure that nothing was pulling. More power than it was supposed to. I believe we have an issue with a meter or something over there. But anyways, we checked all the visuals out that we could, anything we could check out. I called, contacted the city, the city's the one that came in with the infrared. They actually attached a monitoring system to the main transformer outside. And they said that it was accurate. Well, I didn't, I didn't agree with that because there's, after speaking with ABM, which is our performance, we have a performance contract, they're supposed to be, make up the difference if we're over budget on this. So, I've talked to their engineers, they said that even if we ran the building twenty-four seven, everything on, it shouldn't be that high. So, not being satisfied with the, with the city totals. At ABM, they have, actually, there's a monitor on there right now, it's been on there since March. So, ABM has been monitoring with, and has it with their engineers, and they're supposed to have been getting back with me because I'm not real happy about this bill being, and I'm sure none of you are either. And I think there's a little bit of a conflict with the city. They're under, they're in a, trying to contract the city to go through a performance contract with them. And I don't know if they wanna, wanna get involved, you know, they don't wanna turn away their chances. I think it would look better if they found the problem and pointed out to the city, so that they were doing their job and find out why we're using this much power. So we're on top of it, there's a monitoring system, and I've been on, in contact with ABM regularly. I've been trying to get, they were supposed to have a report for me tonight, and it hasn't come. So I will be making a few phone calls tomorrow. We need to get to bottom of this, because that's a lot of money. I mean, four thousand dollars average last year, and then we've had several bills that were over twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that concerns me, and I want to let you know that we're, I'm throwing everything we can to get to the bottom of this. But we'll get this resolved, and they have to refund us some of our money from the city. Either they or ABM, because there's, I don't believe we're using that kind of power. It's just, no way. That's, that's what we're, as soon as I know anything, I will be in contact with all people who need to know, and we'll move on from there.
And just to add to that, if you would look at the other schools in the report, they're pretty much on average as to their usage and cost from the previous year.
And J.P. King's the smallest one, so it should not be pulling twenty-one thousand dollars.
Are there any questions?
Thank you both.
We'll have Ms. Kindred stay, thank you, Mr. Custer, I appreciate it. We'll have Ms. Kindred stay, and she will be doing the financial updates, the budget process and timeline.
What I have prepared for both the board and the community is a budget process and timeline. And as you can see, in September, actually, September the twenty-ninth, we will be having our budget kickoff meeting. And that will be the superintendent's budget team. If I could direct you to this slide here to introduce to you some new things that I would like for us to do, which would be to have an online survey that's sent it to the public to solicit their feedback. And what I've done is, I've created that questionnaire already, and you have it at your station. I would love your feedback on that. If you could just provide me with any information that you'd like to share, that you'd like to see added to that, I'd be glad to put those in there also. The other item that I would like to present to you all is a new idea, which is to have a community engagement meeting. And we kind of like an informal public hearing to maybe draw in the public, some that don't want to come and speak at the public hearing at the school board meeting, would be more willing to come out and share their ideas with us at a community engagement meeting. Do you guys have any questions for me regarding the budget timeline and process?
I think it's an excellent idea, Ms. Kindred, to have the community more engaged.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The next item would be the budget calendar. And that direct, the information in the budget timeline and process directly correlates with the budget calendar. If you want to take a look at that, if you have any questions about that, I'll be willing to answer those for you.
Only question I had when I looked through it, it looked just really thorough. And I know health insurance is an issue. When, when would you all begin to get some information back on health insurance?
I have indicated that. Please, just one moment. In October, November is when we'll start to look at, and that's a part of the budget timeline and process also. You'll see, in October, November, it says that the finance department will gather information on changes in healthcare costs, retirement benefits, and other payroll-related costs.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing a timeline.
Yes, ma'am. Are there any other questions that you all have for me?
Ms. Kindred, I just want to thank you. The biggest change is making certain that we involve the community more in this process. And this process is as transparent as possible. So, the information that you see this evening, after it is approved by the board, will be uploaded to the website. We will make sure that we email and do reverse nine-one-one phone calls to all the parents and community members to have, invite them out to the schools when we have our community engagement meetings. That is one of our strategic goals this year, is to make sure that we have more of a community voice in the decisions that we make as a division.
And if I may provide you some feed, some follow-up on a question that you all presented to me. It was in regards to healthcare, I mean, yeah, health insurance for board members. And I just wanted to let you know that you are indeed eligible for health benefits. And if you were to select the KA five hundred for employees only, the cost to the division would be two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty cents. And then to each individual member, it would be three hundred and eighty dollars, eighty-nine dollars, I'm sorry, and eighty cents if you elected to go with the health insurance with the school division. And that's a part of policy BHD, where it says that you're eligible. Yes, ma'am, those are the monthly figures. Are there any questions in regards to that? All right. Thank you.
Ms. Kindred, one moment. We want to make certain that we update our community on our maintenance of effort report. This is something that we submitted recently, and we want to make certain that our community is aware of it, as well as the board. So at this time, we will bring Ms. Norletta Edmonds, who's serving as our interim director of special education. And she will update us on the maintenance of effort report.
Good afternoon, good evening. Before you, you have a copy of our annual plan. And if you would refer to page number one thirty-five in the annual plan, which is the maintenance of effort. You don't have that in your packet?
Page one.
On page, on page one thirty-five in the maintenance of effort, I'd like to report that we have received approval. As of September twelfth, two thousand seventeen, we received approval of the maintenance of effort report.
If I may add that, this is just a follow-up to the work session that we had, our last work session, where we presented to you that information regarding the maintenance of effort. And Ms. Edmonds is just reporting out that it has been submitted and it was approved. So our maintenance of effort is complete. And we're very proud of that fact.
Are there any questions? Thank you so much. Now we'll have Ms. Conaway. We'd like to invite you up to update us on the federal grants, Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers and the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hope, Dr. Hall-Lenard, board members, Mr. Ms. Sterling, Dr. Geiger, and Ms. Williams. Tonight, I stand for you to update you since the last time we met, and I'm just gonna go over the adjustments since the last time we met. Okay? In your board packet, you should see a spreadsheet, but I know that's small, so I'll put it in front of you. So you should have a spreadsheet that looks like this, okay? You would notice on title six B rule, rule in low income, you notice that from the last time, the expenditure column, we have now have a balance of zero. So all of the money has been expended in that line. So we have met our September thirtieth deadline. The next grant that's entitled six B rule education, there's no change. Career and technical education, there's no change. And title one, it says one oh oh three G, S P. Morton beside it, twenty sixteen. We have expenditures of three thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Ms. Kindred, I'll do it, don't do it, I got it, let me do it, thank you. And there, and that leaves us a projected balance that we have submitted to the Department of Education because with school improvement funds, and that's the title one, one oh oh three G, once you get down close to the end of your year, you submit to them what your projected balance would be. And because we put money in after-school tutoring, that we didn't use all of it. We used some in curriculum, we didn't use all of it. And then we also have an office of school improvement contractor where we did not use all of the money. So what they would do, they would take that balance, subtract it from what we requested, and so we can get the amount we requested. So it would still be here, but it would be subtracted from our request amount. And we requested two hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. And title one, twenty fifteen, currently, we have, we have expended, we have incurred six thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-one cents. We have a balance of two thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. I have purchase orders submitted to the Department of Education that they are working on approving. And once they get those back to me, that balance should go to zero as well. We have in twenty sixteen, no change. If you notice, the twenty seventeen allocation has been approved, but the actual award is different from the projected amount that the Department of Education told me to use as far as when I did the application for the award. And the application amount was eight hundred sixteen thousand five hundred and... $816,518. That's on your previous sheet. But our true allocation, once the, what was given to us, was $752,738.87. So, that's a $63,779.13 decrease. Under Title 2, 2015, we had to do a journal entry of $74.02 because we received money back from a teacher who had left our division. And we gave her tuition reimbursement, and so she had to pay us back. And so, from this particular grant, we had taken $74.02. So, that went back into our account. And so, therefore, we had a, a journal entry of 7402. We have incurred Currently, we have $21,339.18 left. And in that amount of money, we're using it for our sign-on bonuses. And so, by the 30th of the month, it will be expended. We had no change in 2016. And our award for 2017 has been approved. When we did the allocation, the Department of Education asked us to do it on $93,976.29, which is on your previous sheet. But when our actual allocation came in, it was $86,406.7, which is a decrease of $7,570.22. And when I have those decreases, I have to do a budget amendment to remove that money from our, our allocation, our, our application. So, I'm working on that now. And then, lastly, you would see Title 3, um, 2015. We have used all of that money, and so now that has been, uh, zeroed out. 2016, there's no change. And 2017, that, I know today, this was already done, but today, I noticed that it was approved. And so, we have been awarded, it was, it's roughly $1,800 for our Title 3 students. For, going forward, once you all have approved the budget for the 21st Century Learning Communities Grant, I'm gonna also add that to the sheet, okay? Questions on this, about this sheet? Next, I will, um, talk to you a little bit about the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Grant. I'm just gonna give a brief overview, some of this information you've already received. Um, each school, they were awarded, um, a 21st Century Learning Communities Grant. SJP King was awarded $156,550 each year for three years. And SP 1 was awarded $157,500 each year for three years. Our co-applicant was Community Outreach Coalition in Portsmouth, Virginia. And I promise you that I will bring you a brochure, and it's in front of you on your, um, at your station about Community Outreach Coalition. So, you can read it at your leisure. It gives you a little bit of information about who they are and what they do to support youth in the Hampton Roads area. Our Community, um, Learning Center program will be a 30-week program. Each school's time will be different because they get out of school at different times. We are slated to start October 4th, because that's our requirement by the, for the Department of Education. It's either 30 days once you're awarded the money, or either 30 days once school starts. We're choosing 30 days after school starts. So, we will start October 4th with our, our Community Learning Centers at both schools. We do have a summer program. It's a four-week program, and we're gonna run them simultaneously. And we're gonna do field trips together, the two schools. Some other related factors, um, our, our community partners. We had a meeting on this past Friday where we received training. And some of our community partners also participated in that training. We invited them all. But we did have First Baptist Church, Hall Street to come participate. Paul D. Camp Community College, they called us and told us that they weren't able to come, but just let them know what they need to do. And we also had Community Outreach Coalition to participate in our training on last Friday, September 15. And we were, uh, trained by our mentor for the program. Her name is Kristy Compton. She's been assigned to us by the Department of Education. She's actually, uh, central office personnel in Lynchburg City Public Schools. But she's supporting eight Community Learning Centers grants, and she's been doing this for a while. And so, DOE has assigned her to us to support us in our efforts to make sure we are accountable for our funds and making sure we're implementing our program as we stated we would in the grant. The JP King Focus is a, uh, fine and practical arts focus, but we are also focusing on enriching our students in reading and mathematics. And we're gonna support them through homework, tutoring, and project-based learning. We're also gonna provide them with enrichment activities that they won't normally get in school during the regular day. And also, they won't normally get just not, not by participating in this opportunity as a Community Learning Centers Grant. We also support our parents through the program. And we're gonna provide them with, uh, skills as far as helping the students at home. And also provide them with marketable skills in case they need them to make themselves marketable in the employment field. SP Morton's grant, it's a stream grant, so we're gonna support them through science, technology, reading, engineering, arts, and mathematics. And we're gonna support them in the same way, through homework, tutoring, and project-based learning, as well as give them enrichment activities and opportunities. And parents also, we're gonna support 20 parents at each school. And those are parents who are, of, the students who we select to be in our program. And we are gonna select, we select 75 students from each school to be in the community, the 21st Century Learning Communities Program. This past, um, Tuesday and Wednesday, we also participated in training in Newport News, Virginia. Uh, went with me was Ms. Francis, Dr. Davis, along with Mr. Warren, uh, Ms. Freeman, as well as myself. We were, we participated in training with the Department of Education. They train all the people who receive grants this year, and that was over, they gave over 50 grants this year. And that's the high number compared to what, um, they normally give. And we were fortunate enough to get two. So, that was great. Any questions concerning our 21st Century Learning Communities Centers? We're excited, and I think we got some excited people ready to work. I really do.
Just like to say thank you so much, Ms. Conaway, for your work.
I appreciate it.
And writing, helped to, helping to write the grant.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And my last item for tonight is the Memorandum of Understanding that Franklin City Public Schools would like to have with the University of Virginia to support, uh, the Virginia's Kindergarten Readiness Program. And what that program is, and we call it VKRP for short, you know, we have an acronym for everything. So, our VKRP program, what it does, it tests our kindergarten students to see if they're ready in mathematics, social skills, and self-regulation. And that works along with PALS, and we had this discussion before. It's phonological awareness literacy screening. That's what PALS stand for. So, it works along with PALS. PALS, uh, test literacy. So, rather than just testing them in one area literacy, we also gonna use the VKRP to test them in those other three areas, mathematics, social skills, and self-regulation. Because that would assess the whole child instead of just the piece of the child. And what happens with that da- data, you, the University of Virginia, what they do, they, uh, set, they actually have the teachers to input that data, once the students test into an online program. And then they give us, the teachers, a comprehensive report. And therefore, they are, they're able to see the whole child. Not just their reading ability, but they can see their mathematics ability, to see if they can get along with others, and can they handle themselves. And that information, they use it to guide instruction. The Department, University of Virginia will provide them with resources to help them be able to guide the instructions based on the children's data. So, they have individual data for every child, but they also have the overall data for their classroom. And so, the data is also shared with our local school system, as well as the Department of Education. So, before you tonight, what we're doing, we're asking you to look at this. And at this time, we won't approve it. That will come up later on the agenda to ask you for your approval. But it does outline the roles and responsibilities of everybody that's involved in this Memorandum of Understanding. On page 1, the Memorandum of Understanding goes through July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2018. And the first Pages 2 and 3, and part of 4, outline the duties and responsibilities of the University of Virginia, which would be managing data, providing the assessment to our school system, training our teachers on how to administer the assessment, provide us with technical assistance in case we have any problems. Uh, they will also agree to sharing the data with us, providing us with a full battery of reports. And they're also, will show us how to use the data to guide instruction. So, they don't just give it to us and turn us loose. They also support us through the entire school year. And so, we'll know how to use the data properly and support our children properly. And what they're asking back from us, it says the responsibilities of participating school divisions is to outline a key contact person at the central office level, who would be Ms. Edwards. They also asked us to, uh, be cooperative in providing them with the information that they're asking about the children, as long as they continue to keep the information, uh, private. They're, um, they're asking us for key contacts at the school level, which would be Dr. Davis, as well as Ms. Cassandra Hob, our reading specialist. They're gonna suppo, uh, ask us to support them in technology, because it is an online program, so our students will be able to use computers, and so they're asking us to allow that. And to allow our teachers to participate as far as giving the test to the students and supplying with the data they're asking for. So, that's kinda basically what the MOU is outlining, in case you didn't get a chance to, uh, look at it. And so, at this time, I'm gonna return to my seat, if you don't have any other questions, and we'll, uh, ask you for approval at, when it comes up in the agenda.
How many assessments do they do? Is it just one?
Well, what they're gonna do, they're asking to give this assessment, which includes three assessments, uh, two weeks prior to giving the PALS assessment. So, those children, they're gonna take this assessment, and they're also go, two weeks later, gonna take the PALS assessment.
Okay.
But PALS, they come back and take it again in January. Because you have your pre, and then you have your mid, and then I think they're gonna take it again in June. So, you have your post. So, you, you're keeping, you're trying to see if the children are growing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it was excellent, thank you. I know that was a lot, but there's a lot going on, so I appreciate it. We're gonna move forward, um, and I'm going to invite Mr. Edwards to come up and discuss our instructional updates, which consist of our student counts, benchmark, pre-screenings, and measure of academic progress, our MAP. Mr. Edwards, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sterling. Let's say good evening to Chairman Hope, Vice Chair Person, Dr. Hall Leonard, and to the Franklin City Public School Board of Education. We want to give you an update on where we currently stand in the division, first, as it relates to our student count. And as of the, we're beginning our third week of school, so we keep an accurate count, days 1 through 10. And our numbers have steadied out now. So, on 9/18, which was this past Monday, we leveled out in the division for the first three weeks of school, because we know there are students that will enroll, um, still, and some students that may leave. But as of right now, we're at 1,114 students in Franklin City Public Schools. And we further broke those numbers down to break it down by school categorically. At SP Morton, we have 586 students, and that includes bright starts.